I call to order the County Placer Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, May 22, 2012 at 9:00 a.m. We will begin today with the flag salute led by Anthony LaBeauf, County Council.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tony. We will now move to the statement of meeting procedures read by our clerk, Ann Holman.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, May 22, 2012. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such, and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all pagers and cell phones be either turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you. All right, now is the time for public comment. Anyone may address the board on any item not on today's agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes since the time allocated for public comment is 15 minutes. If all public comments cannot be heard within that 15-minute timeframe, we will reopen public comment and take it up again at the end of our regular session. And understand that the board is not permitted to take any action on anything raised under public comment. Is there anyone who has any public comment who would like to come forward? Please come forward. Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity to address the board. My name is Carol Rubin. I live at 2079 Country Hill Run in Newcastle, and I want to bring to the board's attention a matter requiring urgent action. To my knowledge, there are currently four proposals for so-called community centers before planning services. That was a search of the website. There are undoubtedly more that are in process. Two of these proposed centers, Wise Villa, which proposes 120-person events, and Gold Hill Gardens, which proposes 200-person events, are located within five miles of each other in a rural area of Placer County. This is a problem because the current definition of a community center in the zoning ordinances is quite vague, and I'll read it to you. "Community centers, land use means multipurpose meeting and recreational facilities typically consisting of one or more meeting or multipurpose rooms, kitchen and/or outdoor barbecue facilities that are available for use by various groups such as for such activities as meetings, parties, weddings, receptions, dances, et cetera, includes grange halls." So this gives the impression that these are little local meeting places where you can have a barbecue, or a potluck, or a square dance, and nothing could be further from the truth. These are huge commercial ventures that propose to hold several events per week for hundreds of transient patrons, and these large-party venues are tremendously disruptive to the neighbors, to the environment, and to the county infrastructure. With the exception of a parking space requirement and a few signage ordinances, there are no regulations presently governing these community centers. The two proposed centers mentioned are both in farm zoning. Farm zoning is the only ag resource and open space zone in which community centers are allowed, and we're wondering why, because this loophole is encouraging developers to locate these giant party halls in prime agricultural areas. If this is allowed to continue, the traffic, noise, and pollution that inevitably follow these facilities will severely degrade the environment, negatively affect surrounding agricultural activities, and cause unreimbursed impacts on county roads and services. So as you've probably been hearing from the MACs, which have been discussing these community centers, the prospect of a community center in the area is causing a lot of alarm and bitterness to the local residents. You folks on the Board of Supervisors and Planning Services have a chance to get out ahead of this issue and do some real good here to protect Placer County farming by doing two things. One is to immediately amend the zoning ordinances to remove community centers' allowed designation in all ag zones, including farm zone. Number two is to call a moratorium on the construction or approval of any community centers until regulations can be written establishing the permitted number of guests, the number of events, the allowed density, infrastructure mitigation fees, and other requirements. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make any comments under public comment? Please come forward.
My name is Patricia Burke. I live at 1700 Country Hill Run in Newcastle, and I am speaking further on Carol Rubin's speech. I also respectfully request a moratorium on all proposed community centers in Placer County until language can be developed and added to the zoning ordinances that specifically addresses and limits the proliferation of these facilities. These are very specific to vineyards. While I agree that vineyards and wine production are an appropriate farm-ag application, I submit that shoehorning tasting dining event structures into the term "community center" allows these commercial ventures to suborn the general plan, whose stated purpose is to preserve and protect Placer County's rural and agricultural heritage. Each facility of this nature has profound impacts on air and water quality, infrastructure, traffic safety, and we, the property owners. I believe that commercial event facilities in rural farm-ag zones are not appropriate and repeat my request for a moratorium. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Pat. Is there anyone else who would like to speak under public comment? Please come forward. No need to wait.
Good morning. Thank you very much for hearing from me. My name is Teresa Chaney, and I live at 6281 Schindler Road in Newcastle, and I just want to underscore the very well-stated position of Carol Rubin and Pat Burke. I feel that part of the reason this needs the attention of the board is because there's been a misuse, and I would go on to say abuse, and exploitation of the vagueness of this term "community center." I think when we look at the intent of Placer County rural, the intent of the zoning and the intent of the community center provision, it's being extremely exploited for basically commercial endeavors in which folks are not having to pay commercial property prices or personal commercial property fees or taxes, and they're using it for commercial use, drawing in people that are not part of the community. The impacts these two women have spoke to are of great concern. They've actually been of great concern, evidenced by the Planning Services Commission, because of the vagueness of this term and this provision within our farming residential agricultural zone, the one out of only four agricultural designations that is allowed community centers. So it's been very contentious. There's been a lot of alarm even from the folks at the planning services area, and I support the idea of a moratorium until further clarification, definition, checking on whether or not stepping back away from this item-by-item process that we've been having as these things are doing an end run to the zoning text amendment that was defeated earlier. Each of these is, we take a step back and take a look at how this designation is being abused and is basically thwarting all of the efforts and the sentiment of the community as expressed in the defeat of the zoning text amendment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Board. My name's Mike Giles. I represent Neighborhood Rescue Group. I'm from 265 Welcome Lane in Newcastle. The question is, should a farmer with a farm also be a nightclub? And I mean that sincerely. The winery ordinance granted the wineries temporary outdoor events. They still have access to temporary events like everyone else, but they got temporary outdoor events. They also got promotional events. But some of the wineries do not want any restrictions, and if they can get a variance as a community center, good heavens, they have hit the jackpot. Community centers do not have the restrictions that a winery has. So can you be a farm and a nightclub at the same time and still meet zoning laws and be within the meaning of zoning? You will have to answer this question, because wineries are asking for variances to be community centers. And if I'm a winery and I can be a community center, well, why can't the Mandarin grower, who is ag, be a community center? How about the Christmas tree grower? How about the flower farmer or the herb farmer? You're going to have to answer these questions if you're going to take the step, because they're going to want to know. I would if I was a Christmas tree farmer and was so inclined to be a community center. I think this board really will have to have some solid, concrete parameters in their head, and hopefully will solicit input from community members if you take that step, because it's enormous. San Joaquin, Lowdy, or counties that are struggling right now with out-of-control events, they're trying to get the genie back in the bottle. It's not easy. So I hope you'll be proactive. How far apart can community centers be? An applicant right now wants to put in a 6,000-square-foot community center .67 miles away from a current grange hall. Grange halls are community centers. Another something else, what do you want our communities to look like, our foothill communities? Should we have community centers every .67 miles? That's not my vision. That's not why I moved to Newcastle. Do you really want every Friday, Saturday, and Sunday in the foothills to be like Second Saturday in downtown Sacramento? Is that an exaggeration? By small margin, but right now, the wineries are violating the ordinances constantly. They just recently got their temporary outdoor event fees waived. Part of the rationale for that was because there are so few temporary outdoor event applications that come in every year. I can tell you why, because the wineries are and have been holding the events without filling out the applications. This county has lost thousands, tens and thousands, over the years, probably hundreds of thousands of dollars due to lost permit money, and that result, that all goes back to a couple of years ago when some county officials made a decision, and I will show you the email if you care to see it.
And Mr. Giles, if you'd wrap up, please.
I shall. It says, "Code enforcement is to hold in abeyance, quote, 'enforcement action against the wineries.'" To my knowledge, that has never been retracted, and the wineries continue to take advantage of that to this day. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. So anyone else who would like to comment under public comment? Last chance? All right. At this time, I will close public comment. Thank you all for coming today. I'm going to move to Supervisor's Committee reports. Supervisor Holmes.
Yeah, I just have an announcement. Tomorrow, I will be traveling to Redding on behalf of the 31-member Regional Council of Rural Counties to speak regarding the, speak to the Board of Forestry hearing regarding the state responsibility area fire fee. So I just want to let you know that I'll be up there protecting our interests.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that. We...
Yeah, so you'll have to handle it by yourself.
Any other Supervisor Committee reports? Okay, I see none. I'm going to bring something up. I serve on the American River Authority, so I actually wanted to mention that the Confluence Festival, the American River Confluence Festival, will be coming forward again this year. We will be celebrating the 100th anniversary of the Mountain Quarry's Railroad Bridge. That's June 9 and 10 of this year, Saturday from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., and then Sunday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the American River Overlook Park there on Pacific Avenue here in Auburn. Great event, wonderful time, get the kids out, get to, among other things, you can identify animal scat. You can become an expert in animal scat identification, so please come join us. It's a great event. I know, boy, the things you learn as a county supervisor. It's fabulous. All right. We do have a supplemental item that I would like to add to the agenda. Tony, did you want to make any comments on this?
Yeah, the chairwoman has brought forth an item honoring Bill Mintline, and it requires a 4/5 vote to add it to the consent agenda, so somebody needs to make a motion.
No approval. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Now on the consent agenda to be acted on with the rest of the consent agenda.
Excellent. Then we will move to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda, including the recently added Bill Mintline recognition, have been recommended for approval by the county executive. We will be convening and acting in our capacity as the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency for item 20. All of these items will be approved by a single roll-call vote, and anyone from the public or the board may ask to address consent items prior to the board taking action, and any item may be moved for discussion. So is there anyone who would like to pull any item at this point? Supervisor Duran?
Yes, I'd like to take a look at item 13B of the consent agenda.
All right. Anything else? All right, then do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 13B?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is a roll call. My apology.
Yes.
Yount, Holmes, Euler, Montgomery.
Yes. All right. At this time, we'll move to 13B. Supervisor Duran?
Great. I just had a couple of questions, and they're probably clarifying, more clarifying than anything else. And my observations are based on not having a complete ordinance in front of me to kind of understand what exactly is going on. The first one concerns the issue of, on page, section 2.44.060, and it appears that the term "equalize the role," I'm not sure whether or not that has a definition in the ordinance itself, but it seems to me, you know, I can get from A to C what exactly you're trying to do during that meeting, but John Q. Public, when they look at this, I doubt they understand what "equalize the role" means. So is there some way or some mechanism within the ordinance that defines that term?
Good morning, Supervisor Duran. Brian Wertz, County Council's office. That "equalize the role" is a term of art that is used throughout the REVEN tax code, and what it simply means is that, well, a tax role is a list of all taxable properties in the county.
Why don't we stop there?
Okay.
I don't need to know what it means, because I already know what it means. What I'm asking is, how do we make sure that the public knows what it means?
It's, I guess the simple answer is, we could add a sentence that would try to explain what it means. It's not something that could be answered simply, though. It's the process by which all property is assessed at equitable rates, notwithstanding Prop. 13 and Prop. 8's impact.
County Council would like to address this question.
If I could supplement Mr. Wertz's comments, is that the process of equalizing the role is somewhat dated and historical. Before Prop. 13, truly, the roles had to be equalized and balanced. Since Prop. 13, pretty much, we implement Prop. 13. There's not a lot of balancing of the rates. Nevertheless, we can make an attempt to add some language to the ordinance, but this is an extremely long, cumbersome issue in the state tax code.
And that's exactly the point that I'm bringing this before you, is that it is complicated. Is there a way that when you present this, or when the public accesses it, that we make sure that they understand exactly what the process is?
I'm sure we could do something.
And that's all I'm bringing this to the attention of the board for. All right. The second thing is, is I wasn't really sure, and this goes to the incorporation of state procedures, section 2.44040, what exactly you were trying to do there.
That's simply a housekeeping matter. The original county code had some enumerated sections of the REVEN tax code mentioned. However, there were, upon review of that, there were other sections of the REVEN tax code that weren't listed that are necessary for the operation of an AAB in a county of this size, and simply referring to that portion of the law that's codified in the REVEN tax code made more sense at this point. It allows the AAB to do what they need to do.
Okay, so basically, when the tax code, California state tax code changes, our ordinance would change to adopt those changes, correct?
Right. Our ordinance wouldn't necessarily need to be changed.
Changed.
We would incorporate those.
You would incorporate those. Okay. That's all I needed to know.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions on this item? Any member of the public have any questions on this item? What's the pleasure of the board?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. At this time, we will move to our 910 timed item. Supervisor Yount.
So I see the vast majority of the Fowler clan in the audience, and all of you are welcome to come to the podium if you'd like, and I'm going to read the resolution, then I'm going to come down and give it to you, and you can have a chance to tell stories about me if you so choose, and you want to defame me even more than I already am. But it's with a great pleasure to read this commendation and present it to the Fowler family, who are lifelong neighbors and friends. So whereas in 1912 Eugene Fowler worked at the Silva-Bethhold Company in Newcastle, was asked by Judge Silva to produce 20,000 hair trees in the highly fertile soils of Newcastle, hence Fowler Nurseries was founded. Whereas during World War II, many local Japanese growers and Japanese employees working for Fowler Nurseries were sent to relocation camps, Gene Fowler's determination, along with the help of local community, assisted in getting crops harvested and delivered to the Japanese growers until they returned. And whereas in the '40s, Bob Fowler joined his father Gene in nursery operations. During that time, Fowler Nurseries, in cooperation with UC Davis, began research on virus-disease fruit, almond trees. Gene and Bob also designed a unique tree digger mounted on a crawler for harvesting crops, which became the second high-clerest tree digger in California. Whereas Fowler Nurseries embarked on a program to discover new rootstocks and varieties that would ripen when few good varieties do. Out of this pioneering program came Dean, Delight, and late Alamar Peaches. And whereas Dick Fowler, Gene's grandson, joined the family business managing the garden center that had been added to the company with his wife Terry working closely by his side, Nancy Fowler Johnson, Gene's granddaughter, also joined the family business to spearhead the commercial division of Fowler Nurseries. Her husband Everett Johnson led the forest conifer division. Whereas after several decades in the business, Fowler Nurseries continued to put great emphasis on research, has established the research and product development department. Fowler Nurseries has traveled the world, formed new business associations, and was a participant in the United Nations Environmental Protection Meetings in Austria. Now therefore, let be known that Placer County Board of Supervisors on May 22, 2012, takes great pride in congratulating Fowler Nurseries on their 100th-year anniversary. And so interestingly, two weeks ago when we last met, we gave a similar resolution to another neighbor family farm, who Bob told me the story one time about how he greeted the founder of one of the family members of that after he returned from one of the internment camps up in Newcastle. Just a rich part of our heritage and something. Did you want to add a little story, anecdote on your part?
Well, as I said before, when we presented it to the Nakai family last board meeting, the Holmes family was here to greet you, fellows. But more than that, we're probably related because my grandmother's sister, Della Moore, married Hiram Fowler, and they lay at rest at the Manzanilla Cemetery. So we've got some connections going way back.
So with that, on behalf of the board, I would have to apologize for the...
Very much.
Robert? Thank you.
So sure, you guys, they're going to take a picture, but then you guys can, so we can turn around.
Thank you very much.
Oh, my pleasure. Thank you, guys.
You guys can have a pudding if you'd like. Just careful with the story.
Okay.
Now we've got you.
Please, take the microphone.
Can we say thank you? Okay. Dick?
It's a pleasure to be here. It's been, I won't say 100 years of hard work personally, but for the family, you know, farming in any part of this state is quite a challenge. You know, we talk about relationships, and Jim was talking about, Supervisor Holmes was talking about us being related. I believe we're SARs together. So, you know, we go back a couple of centuries here in reality. Interestingly enough, Robert and I were almost classmates in school, going through school together. In fact, we were, to make it even a little bit more interesting, Bob, if you don't mind, we were altar boys together, believe it or not. So once again, on behalf of the Fowler family, we greatly appreciate, you'd have never guessed, would you? We greatly appreciate the honor that you have bestowed on us today. Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks again.
Thank you. All right. Jim's telling more stories up here, so I hope no one can hear that. All right. We will now move to our 920 timed item. This is a presentation of a proclamation declaring the week of May 19 through May 25, 2012, as the National Safe Boating Week in Placer County. We have with us to accept this proclamation Dawn Enos Coxon from Flotilla 3, Division 3, District 11 NR of the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary. If you wouldn't mind coming forward, please. We have this lovely proclamation. I can say that word to give you, and it reads, "On May 22, 2012, in the matter of a proclamation designating the week of May 19 through May 25, 2012, as the National Safe Boating Week in Placer County. Whereas the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary was established by Congress in 1939 to primarily assist the U.S. Coast Guard in promoting boating safety. The Auxiliary boasts over 36,000 members nationwide from all walks of life, who each receives special training and are always ready to support the United States Coast Guard and recreational boating public. And whereas each year approximately 700 Americans lose their lives in boating accidents, statistics have indicated that those boaters who have completed a boating safety class are far less likely to become a boating fatality statistic. In fact, U.S. Coast Guard statistics show that 80% of the fatalities in boating accidents had no formal boating safety education. And whereas, since its inception, the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary's have expanded their parameters to include providing vessel safety checks, safe boating courses, search and rescue, lifesaving public education, marine environmental protection, and providing towing services to disabled or impounded boats, to name just a few of the many missions its members participate in. And whereas a flotilla is the basic organizational unit of the Auxiliary and is comprised of at least 15 qualified members who carry out the day-to-day missions of Team Coast Guard, every Auxiliary member is a part of a flotilla. And whereas Flotilla 33 of Placer County continues its efforts in support of the U. have indicated that those boaters who have completed a boating safety class are far less likely to become a boating fatality statistic. In fact, U.S. Coast Guard statistics show that 80% of the fatalities in boating accidents had no formal boating safety education. And whereas since its inception, the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliaries have expanded their parameters to include providing vessel safety checks, safe boating courses, search and rescue, lifesaving public education, marine environmental protection, and providing towing services to disabled or impounded boats, to name just a few of the many missions its members participate in. And whereas a flotilla is the basic organizational unit of the auxiliary, and is comprised of at least 15 qualified members who carry out the day-to-day missions of Team Coast Guard, every auxiliary member is a part of a flotilla. And whereas Flotilla 33 of Placer County continues its efforts in support of the U.S. Coast Guard mission to educate by offering boating safety classes and providing recreational boating safety information and resources to the public. And whereas in 2011, the members of Flotilla 33 of Placer County volunteered 4,032 hours educating the public in boating safety, and most importantly, promoted the wearing of life jackets, Flotilla 33 also provided 159 courtesy boat safety inspections. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Placer, in support of Flotilla 33 of Placer County and the United States Coast Guard's mission, does hereby designate the week of May 19 through May 25, 2012, as National Safe Boating Week, and urges all boaters of inland lakes and rivers to always exercise safe boating practices, and most importantly, to safeguard their lives by wearing life jackets when on the water." Thank you for accepting this today.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
We'll get a photo, and then we'd like you to say a few words. Let you hold that.
I'd like to thank the board for this opportunity to say a couple of words. There's not much I can add to what Ms. Montgomery already passed on, but anyone can be a member of the Coast Guard Auxiliary. All right? We are considered the non-military arm of the U.S. Coast Guard. You don't have to have former military service to be a member. I personally served in the Army, so I made a transition, so to speak. It was fairly easy. We do have a lot of members who have interests other than boating. We also have an air arm located at McClellan, and we have, of course, our boating safety classes. I personally, I taught a class this past Saturday at the Citrus Heights Community Church, just on boating safety. So that's one of our big missions, right there. And that, and we call them inspections. We don't really inspect boats. What we do is we basically make sure that a vessel meets legal requirements when it goes out on the water. You know, life jackets, fire extinguishers, that type of inspection, if you want to call it that. So our mission is pretty basic. We have no law enforcement authority. We do have radios, and we occasionally have an opportunity to tattle, if you want to call it that, if we see something that is really a big, what would you say, law-breaking experience. And we encourage other boaters, all boaters actually, to be part of what's called America's Waterway Watch. And that's simply being aware of what's going on around you. If you see something that looks suspicious, not necessarily people who may look suspicious, but if you see activities that look suspicious, there's a number, and it's listed in the boating regulations, federal and state, you can report that experience or that activity. And things have been caught. Just recently, they did, we had some auxiliaries who spotted some suspicious activity at the port of Oakland, and they did, they did end up arresting, they being the Coast Guard, arrested some members who were trying to set, or not members, but public people who were trying to do some damage at the port. So it's important. All right? That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Coxon Enos. Very much appreciate your work. All right. At this time, we'll move on to the 9:30 AM timed item, County Executive Office, Placer Legacy Presentation. Lauren Clark and Allison Carlos.
Good morning. Allison Carlos with the County Executive Office, and I was just going to lead off. This is a joint presentation with Lauren Clark, the Assistant Community Development Resource Agency Director, as well as we have with us Facility Services staff, and also the Agricultural Commissioner. All are very much involved in Placer Legacy. We're asking your board today just to receive a presentation and to provide any direction that you might deem necessary at the end of the presentation. We have not presented on Placer Legacy for quite some time. This is a 12-year-old program. We thought it was very timely. Also, given the fact that there are some infrastructure planning workshops coming forward, this would be a good one to correlate to that future effort out of the County Executive Essentially, the staff report is very complete, so we were just going to touch on a couple of highlights here. The Placer Legacy Program has been in effect since 2000 and essentially implements elements of the general plan as relates to natural resources. This chart is very helpful in just having a visual as to how Placer Legacy breaks down, and to touch on a couple of areas. The agricultural resources segment as an objective, these are the main six objectives of the Legacy Program. It is really to value and preserve agricultural resources and the production nature of agriculture within open space. And also, it's an economic generating activity. We also have scenic resources, public safety, and also biological resources. And I would just take a moment with the biological resources for preservation of biodiversity in animal and plants. There is a correlation here with the Placer County Conservation Plan, the PCCP, and what we would do is just distinguish that the PCCP is regulatory in nature, as the Placer Legacy elements for conservation is non-regulatory in nature. Obviously, the Placer Legacy Program did kickstart and get the work effort on PCCP moving forward. Essentially, there are 10 study areas that were originally structured because Placer Legacy was covering the entire county. That's not to say there's not overlap in geographical boundaries with some of the work efforts that move forward, but this just represents those 10 study areas. The east slope of the county, the west slope, Forest Hill, Lower Sierra, the Auburn-Bulman area, the American River Canyon, Loomis Basin, Sheridan, the Garden Bar area, and the Agricultural Valley, and then South Placer. So with that very brief overview of the program, I'm going to turn it over to Lauren Clark.
Thank you, Allison. When you actually look at the activities of the past 12 years, the program has really been focused in essentially four areas. One is a lot of planning activities, which are hard to visually represent on a slide, but there's been a lot of watershed-level planning, predominantly in western county streams, Coon Creek system, Auburn Ravine, Dry Creek system, all have some sort of ecosystem restoration plan that's been prepared. There's also a plan that was prepared in the Truckee River corridor, looking at access between Squaw Valley and the town of Truckee to the north. So a lot of planning activities, many of which have been funded by outside grants. Certainly, the program areas that get the most focus are the land acquisition activities. Notable within that are the fee tidal acquisitions that the county has participated in, that have resulted in new public recreation opportunities, both at the Hidden Falls Regional Park and at the Waddle property in the east. But also, we have a lot of acquisitions that are in the form of conservation easements, where the private landowner owns the property, they have sold a bundle of rights, typically their right to develop a portion or all of their property, other than how they currently use it, and that property is protected in perpetuity. In those cases, it's rare, or typically it's not, including public access. The property is protected for the resource that is present and managed in perpetuity for that purpose. And then the last of the program areas is restoration. You will hear a presentation shortly after we close from NID about a Fish Passage project for Salmon and Steelhead, but we've also done work in the Coon Creek system and in the Dry Creek system as well. One of the key areas that has demonstrated success for the program is the ability to partner with other institutions, both in the nonprofit world as well as within state government. Approximately 65% of the funding, as you will see with Allison's presentation remarks, has come from outside sources. So the county's been able to leverage its dollars with the dollars predominantly from the state of California through bond sales, but also through gifts and donations and funds that our partners have found. Certainly, the activities of Land Trust in the county are key. Placer Land Trust to the west, Truckee Donner Land Trust to the east, Trust for Public Land has been very engaged as well. When you look at what has happened, you have approximately 425,000 acres of the county that you could consider in some sort of open condition, that's slightly less than half. The vast majority of that is owned by the federal government in the form of the Tahoe National Forest, BLM, Bureau of Rec. Placer Legacy has acquired with partners, so we don't own all of this, around 8,700 acres, and most of that has been to the west. There's a number of willing sellers out there, and conversations at some level, very preliminary in some cases, and more complete in others, would account for approximately 7,800 acres, both in the Sierra Nevada as well as out to the west. When you look at the distribution of what has happened, certainly certain properties stand out. Waddle Ranch here in the eastern county, which actually is in Placer and Nevada County. The property was ultimately transferred to the Truckee Airport, and it is managed as public open space available for recreation. And a large cluster of activities here around Hidden Falls, and then other properties in the Sheridan Garden Bar area, fee tidal ownership by the county, Placer Land Trust ownership as well, public access ultimately just across almost all of those properties, and together they add up around 4,000 acres, including three miles of the Bear River on the Bruin Ranch. And there's other activities that are starting to emerge on the valley floor. There's even a small property on the shore of Lake Tahoe, right next to the Bagel Shop, which is a great place in Tahoe City. So real diversity of activity. When you look at where we're going, certainly the activities that are associated with the Placer County Conservation Plan are increasingly appropriate and important. We can help implement the PCCP through the activities of Placer Legacy. So there's a lot of interest in the area around the Sheridan Garden Bar area. A lot of it is in the potential reserve area of the PCCP, a lot of resources in that area that could benefit the PCCP, and yet meet all of the objectives of the Legacy Program for open space and ag land, biodiversity, public safety, et cetera. There continues to be interest in the west slope Sierra, certainly in the sort of the Royal Gorge, Sota Springs area, there are a number of willing sellers in that area. And we continue to emphasize access, particularly in those places where it is appropriate to do so. So public access, public use of lands when appropriate is an important part of the overall effort. And with that, I'll turn it back to Allison on the funding.
Briefly, we just have a few slides to restate some of the funding issues. Obviously, a program like this takes a substantial amount of funding. As you know, in 2000, when the county tried to move forward with a quarter cent sales tax, that did not pass for the purposes of open space funding. For acquisitions, a total of about 40, almost $49 million. You can see, as Lauren mentioned, this is highly leveraged, about 17 million of county costs, which is predominantly mitigation fees and general fund. And then outside funding has been the other 65%. This is just a pie graph that breaks down that 17 million dollars, and you can see general fund, the mitigation funds, we have a number of mitigation funds that have been used for acquisition, and the federal funding of HR 2389 Secure Rules funding. The general fund has been a major contributor to the open space fund over time. This graph just is demonstrative of, with the constraints on county budget, how that has declined over time. We started out with your board with a contribution, it leveled off at around $1 million. We saw some increases when you applied the CPI in early 2005, '06. And then with the economy decline in 2007, there was a half of a contribution in 2008, and then as of 2009, '10 fiscal year, there has been no general fund contribution. At this point in time, as Lauren had mentioned, there are activities in this program. And the activities, as we are best able to estimate, given some of those areas which were bubble diagrammed, we have about emerging $2 to $4 million of acquisition potential. And we have about $2.8 million in funding that we have identified available for that potential purpose, at your board's discretion. And so you can see that over time, we think in about the next one to two years, if we proceed, we continue with the program as we have, in terms of framing potential acquisitions for you, we will be out of funds in, we estimate, one to two years. And so staff would just want to affirm with you today that absent any further direction, what we would proceed to do is continue with the program, recognizing there's a limited amount of funds available, and that there are some potential emerging acquisitions, and that would be in those areas of the Coon Creek Conservation Easement for flood control potentially, acquisition to provide connectivity between Hidden Falls and conservation lands. And this is pretty consistent with this map that Lauren had here. Evaluate potential for matching funds to acquire lands as jumpstart criteria for the PCCP, to continue to evaluate the acquisition of agricultural conservation easements, and to continue to implement ecosystem and watershed-level restoration plans throughout the county. So those are listed in your staff report also. So essentially, we would intend to proceed with our normal processing, as has occurred with the program, and that would be the full extent of our presentation, our update to you on Placer Legacy. And if you have questions, we would be happy to answer them.
Supervisor Holmes.
I don't have any questions or comments. First of all, it's a very popular program, and when I go out in the community and ask about it, it's very positive that I get this presentation. And I want to thank you for the well-written report here. It's very easy to understand, and when I, actually, I'm going to be at the Penrein Mac tonight, and I will give, you know, an update, so I can explain it to the community of Penrein, because they're very interested in the Placer Legacy program. And this will give me a very, all the answers that I need to know when people ask me questions about it. So I just want to thank you, and let's keep moving forward with this very popular program. Thank you.
Supervisor Wiegand.
Well, first of all, Lauren, thank you for all of the years of dedication you have invested, particularly in the recent years with the Conservation Plan. We'll have to write a book when it's all done, and I'm sure there'll be some fun in all of that. But I have a question. It strikes me that over the years, there's always been greater demand for the funds, more projects wanting to participate in the fund as compared to the money we've had available. Is that accurate?
It continues to be true. Today, the figure that Allison had up a second ago that showed potential acquisition areas is certainly in the 8 to 10, even 12 million dollar range. We're focused on properties that are falling in the $2 to $4 million range right now because of higher priorities associated with public access, PCCP-related, et cetera. But in the entire history of the program, there has always been more willing sellers, and we've had funding available. And certainly with the status of the economy now, even more so.
Just been my gut feel, based on people who would prefer to do a conservation, willing sellers, who want to do a conservation easement, but we have a scarcity of funds. It seems like it's always been that way, so I wanted to. So I guess with that, you know, I appreciate, this is not an essential local government program, but I think, as Jim mentioned, it is one that fits really well with our county and resonates perfectly with our constituents. Has there ever been a project, any projects at all that we've invested in that did not include some kind of a match?
Yeah, there was a small conservation easement acquisition to the west, a small ranch that was county-only. It was around an $80,000 acquisition. Heritage Park, I don't know, no, that was outside-funded. It may be the only one. I'd have to go back and look at the data, but by and large.
An interesting statistic to look at. I mean, we know how much our money has been leveraged. It looks like we've invested about 35% of the monies that have resulted in all of the projects we've done. And we always knew that most projects would require a match, and so if we didn't have some money available, we couldn't even be in the game. So I guess with that, just to comment, County Exec, I understand we have an extraordinarily difficult economy, but this is a program that I think fits us so well. And if we completely run out of money and can't even take advantage of programs for which there are grant, which there are the vast majority, I guess I'd just like to see us some point in the game where we can start to replenish that reserve. The Conservation Plan in and of itself should help when we complete that, but I guess I'd like some analysis of all of that and some feedback as we go forward with our future budget experiences. Thanks.
Supervisor Yula. Oh, I'm sorry, Holly, did you want to respond to? Supervisor Yula?
Yeah, we've done a very nice job with a lot of good recreational amenities, and those obviously.
Oh, I'm sorry, Holly, did you want to respond to... Supervisor Yula?
Yep. We've done a very nice job with a lot of good recreational amenities and those obviously pay a dividend that's a bit more intangible, but folks enjoy it. Given the scarcity of funds, where we are with the PCCP, those kinds of things, I think it would be prudent for us to look at the focus for the limited resources that we have for acquisitions, be they simply easements or outright fee, simple acquisitions, in that area that we know that we will get some kind of a return and that's in the stay ahead provision on the Burnelpool Grasslands. Those are dollars that if we spend, we know that we will get dollars back as those credits are needed from the business community. And so, I think to the extent that it furthers our objective on the PCCP and provides a potential for us to actually recoup the dollars spent, that might be where we want to look at investing our limited bucks right now.
Holly?
I was just going to respond to Supervisor Wiggant and it is consistent with Supervisor Yula's comments. You know, we have had a very robust program and I think our residents have benefited from that. I think just some of the long-range planning that your board will be doing over the next couple of months, including the infrastructure plan and some of our strategic planning efforts related to ongoing infrastructure expenditures, which I think this is part of our county infrastructure, if you will. It will be important to prioritize this among those as well. So I think it gives a good platform to consider these sorts of dedications over time. So your board will be seeing this as part of our overall planning effort and strategy.
Thank you, both of you. Very good presentation. I did have a couple of quick questions and comments. I understand very well the limited dollars that are still available. I have had discussions with a number of the potential partners out there, including some of the land trusts, about possible opportunities, including the one in the West Lope area. I don't have an issue with the priorities that you've outlined here today, but I did want to just comment a little bit on your last bullet point, which is continue to promote the Placer Legacy program utilizing existing county resources. And I think it's important to note that there are opportunities to potentially use some of the non-Placer Legacy funds to help with some of these acquisitions. I'm thinking the Donner Cemetery area particularly. We're through parks, through facilities, we're already trying to work on an overland immigrant trail up there. It goes smack dab through the property that the Truckee Donner Land Trust is looking at trying to acquire up there. So I think there's an intersection between our county dollars that we've already kind of identified for those sorts of trail uses that would be very robust public access and funding that. That's, you know, there's some other opportunities there as well. That trail goes through both Nevada and Placer County and I think some discussions with Nevada County as to what they might bring to the table in terms of that specific potential piece of property, because it is a by-county, very robust public-private discussions going on up there right now that I'm not going to divulge because they're delicate negotiations. But there are some opportunities, getting back to Supervisor Yula's concerns about how do we maximize our dollars. That particular acquisition would potentially have a, an opportunity for the public to come in and go back to using those trails as cross-county ski trails in the winter as a paid use. And that is revenue that would ultimately at least partially come back to Placer County through tax revenue. So I think it's important for us to not just focus necessarily on the Placer Legacy dollars because they are very, very limited, as we know, and we, you know, may need them for more immediate concerns. But I think it is important to try to identify where we do have those other intersections, both at our county, with neighboring counties, and with private partners such as homeowners' associations and the land trusts, to do things that really would actually have an economic benefit to the county, not just be a great place to go recreate, though it would be a great place to go recreate. So, thank you again. Any other questions or comments from the board? Anyone in the audience like to comment on this item? Yes, please come forward.
Hey, thank you. I'm Jim Hoggensmuth. I'm on the Board of the Placer Land Trust, volunteer board member, and just like to thank the county staff for all their great work, first of all. The Placer Legacy program has been very important to the county and to the work the land trust has done. It's amazing when we talk to other land trusts across the state to realize how valuable and how lucky we are to be able to work with the county staff and the county, with the county Placer Legacy program. It gives us a lot of great opportunities that are not available in a lot of other land trusts across the state. Being able to leverage the local funds along with private funds and state and federal funds gives us flexibility that the other land trusts just don't have. So we end up being able to acquire lands that would be much harder for us to do without that. So that's the first major point. And then, we've talked a little about recreation and public benefit from the, sort of the open space and all, but the other thing we've got to remember is agriculture. Agriculture and small farms in this county is definitely a public benefit also. And the legacy program has done a bit in that area. We'd like to see more. The Placer Land Trust is very actively further developing a small farm program. And we're going to be very broad searching for funds to do that work and we hope to be able to use some legacy funds in addition to other funds. And just talking about leveraging of funds, I'd just quickly say, with acquisitions that we've used legacy funds and county funds, we typically leverage between around 10 to one, down to as little as two to one. So it's really great to be able to do those kind of leverages and, you know, so it's, you know, two to one has been the worst return on investment the county has gotten when working with the land trust. 10 to one has been around the best. So it's a truly good return on investment. And then, let's see, yeah, we've brought in over about $16 million from other sources outside the county. And that is money that comes into the county that provides economic benefit. That typically goes to local landowners and they typically will spend that money in the county, or at least some of it. So think of it as benefit to the county and economics, so. That's about the rundown. We, like I said, really appreciate what they've done and it's made our job so much easier and we've, they've been a great partner. We're looking forward to a lot of new recreational opportunities on the lands that we've acquired. Lauren had sort of hinted towards access. You know, legacy funds may be going to improve access on some of the lands we've already acquired. Much of the stuff we've acquired out in the Garden Bar area. We're looking forward to recreational opportunities, but we've got just little issues with private roads and those kind of things, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Would anyone else like to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, thank you both very much for the update. Much appreciated. We'll now move to our 9:40 timed item. This is a Board of Supervisors item, an informational presentation from the Nevada Irrigation District regarding the Auburn Ravine Gauging Station Fish Passage Improvement Project. Phew, that's a mouthful. And our presenter today is Keon Summers. Keon, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Keon Summers. I'm with Nevada Irrigation District. I brought with me today Director Jim Bachman. Ron Nelson, General Manager, was supposed to be here today, but unfortunately, he was called away on an emergency meeting for our hydroelectric re-licensing project. He asked specifically that I thank Edmund Sullivan for his work on this project. And I didn't see Edmund here earlier, but he was really a key to getting this project done. He also asked that I thank, that I point out the work that Jack Sanchez and Stan Nader with SARSIS put towards this project. My presentation today is a lot of pictures and a, just kind of a summary of the work that happened out there and some of the experiences we had. And then, a thank you to the county. You put together, there's a lot of staff time that went into this and there's a lot of money that went into our project here. So we wanted to give you kind of a taste of everything that happened out there. Just to make sure everyone's familiar with where the project is, this is Highway 65 here, Ferrari Ranch Road, and our gauging station down in Lincoln. Project was sponsored by Placer County. The Granite Bay Flycasters gave us some money, the Dry Creek Conservancy. There was a fair amount of CalFed money that went into it and the Nevada Irrigation District picked up the rest of the funding. We had a number of challenges with a project like this. First and foremost, the permitting for this project was amazing. We had a consultant out there full-time that had to monitor while construction was going and we put together a binder of all the permits and it was about two and a half to three inches thick of the regulations that we had to meet out there. Schedule was a real challenge on this project. The district and others move a fair amount of water through Auburn Ravine during the summer months, which is when you'd want to be constructing some of this, something of this nature. And then, once it starts to rain, there's a tremendous amount of water in the ravine. So we had a really pretty tight window to build this thing in from, say, October to November, December was our goal. Access was a challenge. The project is located in a Corps of Engineers and city nature area. We had a concrete driveway sidewalk that we could walk in on or drive all of our equipment in on and that proved to be a real challenge. Dewatering, I've got some pictures of the struggles that we had dewatering this area to build this project. While we were building, we came into a whole bunch of debris. The area is, you know, appeared to have been a former dumping ground. We had a tremendous amount of concrete debris that we ended up pulling out of there and moving offsite. And then, we had a very small working area to build a project of this size. And I wanted to give you a picture of the area, both when we put the gauging station in originally and after, you know, since 1981, 30 some odd years of water flowing through there. What you'll see is that originally, we had a small lip there and then over the years, the stream bed incised about six feet or so, to the point where migrating fish could no longer get up the, through the gauging station. So this is a drawing of the project that kind of, and I'd like to show you some of the highlights of what we did out there. First of all, we built a temporary cofferdam inside the existing gauging station and built the bypass pipe around the entire project so we could move flows in the stream around the project and then built the actual structure in the construction area shown here. We, what we did is built a series of chutes and pools. Our goal is to build a more nature-like fishway. We didn't want the rigid concrete structure out there. We wanted something that was going to blend in with the natural surroundings, once it has a chance to revegetate. What we did do is put some very large stabilizing walls in to make sure that we don't suffer the same erosion problems that we had with the first gauging station. And then, we solidified that with large rock and then smaller rock throughout. So these are just a few pictures of the area prior to construction. Our gauging station is here. This is looking upstream at the gauging station and then again upstream from the other side of the creek. First step that we had to do was clear all of the fish out of the channel. So we installed nets both up and downstream and then sent in some specialized fish rescuers who netted everything, got everything outside of the nets prior to dewatering. At that point, we installed our temporary cofferdam and dewatered the stream. Again, all of the water that was, that is in the ravine is now in a pipeline over on this area here that goes around and dumps out at the bottom of the project. We did our preliminary grading of the area and we realized that we had a pretty significant water problem at that point. At this point here, you can see just how much water is down here in the pool and that's with two six-inch pumps and a large diesel-driven pump running nearly continuously. We just could not get the water out of there. The solution that we came up with was to bring in a specialized drilling contractor who installed 11 dewatering wells and the pumps associated with them. They brought in three 22-kilowatt generators, one diesel pump, and then four other pumps that we just put in the area that we were working on, along with a 21,000 gallon settling tank. At that point, we were able to dewater the area enough to work in. It was still a challenge. You can see here the crane bringing in the large pre-cast concrete walls. It was truly a massive crane. We had a number of people stop by the job site because you could see the crane from just about anywhere in Lincoln at the time that the work was going on. Again, you can see the mud that we were working with, even though this is dewatered. These guys did a tremendous job out there constructing it. There's some pretty difficult circumstances. They essentially rigged up a system where they would take traffic plates and drive them into the creek, excavate between them, and then set the walls as they went through. Here you can see we've got the walls nearly installed and are beginning to place the rock in the area. Prior to putting water back into the channel, the dirt that came with the rock and any dirt as part of the construction debris was cleaned off of the rocks. We couldn't just flush that down the stream, so we cleaned it out, pumped it, treated it, and discharged it. And what you see here is immediately prior to rewatering the channel, we have the finished bank over here and then an unfinished bank in this area here. The reason this bank is unfinished is because, once we got the water back into the channel, we had to pull the back out the bypass pipe, which was extremely close to the, to the bank. This is immediately after we pulled the cofferdam out. You can see the water starting to flow through. You can see the pool starting to form up here at the top and then a chute section here, another pool, another chute, and another pool. As part of the project, we also modified our existing gauging station and we cut a notch in it for a low flow that will help channelize the flow so the fish can get up there. Our operators say it looks like it lost its front tooth now, but it'll be much more effective in passing fish and we can still accomplish what we need to accomplish. I have some pictures here. Again, this is the pool where the fish can come up and rest and then a chute section that they can make their way up. Some immediately after construction pictures, just to give you an idea of what it looks like. And then, our construction inspector also happens to be an amateur pilot, so he flew over the area and took this picture of it. You can see the pools, chutes, pool, and then a larger pool at the bottom. These are some recent pictures of some of the higher flows that we had down there during the winter. You can see that during the April flow, we've lost some vegetation over here, so the water did come up and get out of the banks during some of the spring flows we had here. Everything performed remarkably well, everything stayed in place. And what you can see is a recent picture, probably from two or three weeks ago here, where the winter flows have brought in a tremendous amount of sand and set up some sandbanks along the side that really help hide the structure. You can see that the vegetation that we planted is starting to grow in here. We'll be monitoring the site for the next five years to ensure that it grows back in. And it's really, I really believe it's going to kind of disappear over time here. I have a little video of the site and I don't know who's working the computer or how that works, but you can see the, this is immediately after we put the water back in. You can see the pools up here towards the top where it flows through. And then, a chute section here that the fish can make their way up. And then, another little pool. I like this video because I think it gives you a real good idea of exactly how it functions out there and exactly how it's, the fish can make their way up pretty easily. You can also see what, you can't see it because they're about buried here. We have one wall down here and then there's a wall down in this area here, so if there is any sort of future incision that happens, the channel bed, we're prepared for it. It's, this project will last quite a while. Those two walls actually from the spring flows have nearly completely disappeared and you just can't see them out there, which is exactly what we were hoping would happen. I believe that is the end of the video and the last slide that I have. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them, but again, we truly thank you for your support of this project. It was really a great project, so, thank you.
Supervisor Wiggant?
Just huge thanks to you and particularly to Ron and Jim, to your leadership and the board's leadership, doing a really quality project. When, as a kid, Auburn Ravine in the fall of the year was filled with fall runginnook salmon coming up here to spawn and we still have some in the stream and I'm sure their populations are going to grow dramatically and provides huge number of benefits. All of these streams, projects were done like this, I think, up and down the valley. The cost-effectiveness of this kind of thing as it relates to the offshore salmon populations, which are critical... which are a critical part of California's economy, reflect a much less expensive way to provide incubation or hatchery opportunities as compared to the, I think there are something like twelve hatcheries in the state for which these populations are dependent upon, a very expensive and challenging way to maintain those populations. So, again, it's a great project, fits in consistently, I think, with a lot of what we're trying to accomplish in our county. So, if you could pass those words on, appreciate it.
Certainly will. Thank you.
Ken, I want to thank you and the staff at NID, as well as the NID Board. I think not only did you do a great project, you did an incredible job documenting it, and I think it's tools like this that are actually going to be very helpful in helping the public understand why these are important projects that we do. You know, sometimes you mention to people some of the things we do as government entities, and they say, "Well, you know, why do you do that?" I think this is a good start to tell that story, and over the next five years, I hope that you and some of your staff go back and continue to document this, so that when we see the salmon come back and the steelhead come back, that we can say, "This is why we do this." And I think I'd like to refer to the project we did up in Tahoe. We had a similar project up in Tahoe, the Lake Forest area in Tahoe City, and our first fall, we had Mackinaw back in the stream. I mean, that was a stream that had been buried for decades. We daylighted it, brought it back, and there were hundreds of people out there as soon as the word got out that the fish were back in the stream spawning. And so, it was a real attraction, not just to locals, but to visitors, and again, an economic stimulus for the county. So, thank you for everything, and certainly thanks as well to your board. Very much appreciated your efforts on this front. Thank you. All right. Any member of the public want to comment on this? Jim, did you want to say anything?
No. It's a great project.
Excellent. We do too. Thank you. All right. Thank you so much, Ken. All right. Nine forty-five timed item, Facility Services, Garbage Collection Fees, Franchise Areas One and Four. Bill Zimmerman presenting.
This morning, we're asking your board's authorization to move forward with an amendment to the garbage collection franchise agreement for Areas One and Four. That will reflect Recology Auburn Placer foregoing their cost-of-living adjustment for fiscal year 1213, and the net result of that is that there'll be no fee increases to the customers in the coming fiscal year. Recology is our garbage collection franchisee for Areas One and Four, and that includes the western portion of the county, basically from Colfax on down, as well as the Forest Hill and Iowa Hill areas. Under the terms of the franchise agreement, Recology is entitled to annual cost-of-living adjustments to account for changes in the prices of fuel, equipment, labor, those types of things. And using the formula specified in the agreement, this year's adjustment would have been 3.42%, which would have been about a forty-three cent increase to a ninety gallon total service, which is what most residential customers in the area have. Recology's been an excellent partner to work with over the last few years, and we've been able to partner with them and come up with a number of ways to minimize fee increases that we've had to pass on to the customers. And this particular year, Recology approached us and said they had found ways within their existing fee structure to offset the increases that the COLA would have covered, and they asked if they could forego their cost-of-living adjustment this year and pass those savings on to the customer. So, with that as background, the specific action that we're asking your board to take this morning is to adopt a resolution authorizing the Director of Facility Services or his designee to execute an amendment to the franchise agreement for Areas One and Four that will reflect Recology Auburn Placer's agreeing to forego the cost-of-living adjustment specified in the agreement for fiscal year 1213, resulting in no increases to fees for fiscal year 1213. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and we do have a number of representatives from Recology here this morning.
Supervisor Holmes.
Thank you, Bill. First, I just want to take the opportunity to thank Recology for their community outreach and their service to our community, and also being so responsive to any concerns that I have. You've always been very responsive and taken care of any issues in a timely manner, and so, it's much appreciated. So, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to echo those words. Recology's just a great, great partner to work with here at the county, and I just am always impressed by what an incredibly reliable service is provided. You know, the phone lines come and go, but it seems like the garbage always gets picked up, and that really can be a challenge, given some of the terrain that you cover, and so I want to take the opportunity to say thank you as well. A question that I had for you, Bill, is the staff report refers to Franchise Area Four as having mandatory service. Is Franchise Area One not a mandatory service area then?
Franchise Area One is not mandatory. Franchise Area Four has the parcel fee, which is used to fund the Forest Hill Transfer Station.
Okay. And then, this may be an unfair question, because I didn't ask you ahead of time, but Franchise Areas Two and Three, are they mandatory, or are they optional as well?
Garbage collection service in the Tahoe Basin is mandatory, and that's required by the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency, is my recollection.
Okay. So, one and two then are optional, and Three and Four are mandatory?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Supervisor Duran.
Yeah, I echo the two comments that were made by Supervisor Holmes and Supervisor Montgomery. I have more of a technical question, and it may be directed at Tony. What's the practical effect of the foregoing of the COLA? Does it mean it's waived completely, or is it held in abeyance, or what?
My interpretation would be they forego the COLA this year, and not next year.
Okay.
If I could?
Go right ahead.
The cost-of-living adjustment for this year, they are foregoing that, and it will not carry forward. So, the 4.3%, it won't add back in next year.
You answer my question. Thank you very much, and thank you again, Recology.
I don't see any other questions from the board. Is there any member of the public or anyone from Recology that would like to come forward to say anything about this item? All right. Thank you. Well, seeing none, then we will bring this back to the board. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right. We will move to our first departmental item, which is Item Six on your agenda, Administrative Services Procurement. Brett Wood presenting.
Good morning, Chairman Montgomery, Supervisors. I'm here with Item Six A, which is a request for a renewal of two competitively awarded blanket purchase orders for gasoline and diesel fuel. As a little bit of history, these were last presented to the board in June of last year. This is a renewal with Hunt &amp; Sons. They provide gasoline and diesel fuel to various county locations, and they set their price based on the OPUS Index and then a margin that we pay them in addition to that rack price for fuel. They've agreed to, Hunt &amp; Sons has agreed to maintain the same margin and the same terms and conditions for the county for this renewal period, and we're requesting at this time $2,165,000 for fuel. This is an increase from last year of about $15,000, which is reflective of the cost of fuel going up, and that impact on the county departments. With that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions that you may have.
I don't see any questions from the board. And I do want to just point out, for anyone who might be listening at home, that the OPUS Index is not a huge masterwork. It actually refers to the Oil Price Information Service, so.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Any member of the public want to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. What's the pleasure of the board? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Brett. We'll move now to, (cough) excuse me, Departmental Item Seven, Facility Services, Forest Hill Transfer Station Improvements. Bill Zimmerman and Not Joel Swift presenting.
Good morning again, Madam Chair. I'm here this morning, Bill Zimmerman, with Facility Services, simply to introduce Kevin Bell, our Environmental Engineering Program Manager, and he will be presenting this item for us.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Kevin.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of your board. I'm Kevin Bell. As Bill mentioned, I'm the Environmental Engineering Program Manager in Facility Services, and we're here to request your board take a number of actions to allow the Forest Hill Transfer Station Improvements project to move forward. For a little background, the Forest Hill Transfer Station serves 6,000 residents in the Forest Hill area, and the site provides an area where people can dispose of mixed waste, green waste, metals, electronics, and tires. The existing facility was constructed in 1984, and it's beginning to show its age and is in need of some improvements. For this project, we're trying to address two primary issues. The first being that we are trying to improve the traffic circulation. Right now, there's a somewhat limited area for folks to turn around and get to the various drop-off sites on the upper portion of the site, and so, we were planning to increase the paving to address that and improve the ability of the public to turn around and get to the different drop-off locations. Secondly, the lower portion of the site is where the large trucks come in and drop off and pick up the disposal bins. That is currently made up of gravel, base rock, over existing soil, and we've actually had some high iron levels in the stormwater runoff from the site because of the stormwater contacting the existing soils. And so, we're planning to pave those areas as well. The estimated construction cost is $365,000, and we're asking for a total construction budget of $400,000 to account for changes during construction. And the project is funded through the Solid Waste Management Enterprise Fund, which is funded through franchise fees for garbage collection. So, with that as background, our recommendation to your board is that you approve the plans and specs, adopt the resolution included in the staff report that authorizes the Director of Facility Services or his designee to execute and award the construction contract, and lastly, that you authorize staff to file the notice of exemption. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about the project.
Any questions from the board? Supervisor Duran.
Yeah. This $400,000 price that you have here, how close to the mark is that? Are all the design documents complete? Has the area been inspected? We're ready to go?
We are currently between 90 and 100% on the design, and it should be complete within about a week or two. The 400,000 includes approximately 10%, just under 10% contingency. And, you know, our staff is fairly familiar with the site and have been out to survey the site, and.
There's nothing unusual about it? There's no?
Not that we're aware of.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? All right. I did just want to thank Bill particularly. He got back to me and answered a lot of questions that I had last week. My only other question that I have at all is, was there any outreach that was really done to the community on this? I mean, are people going to be surprised that this project is moving forward?
I'm not aware of any outreach that we've done. We could certainly do some. It is fairly isolated from the community, so I don't think there'll be a lot of construction-related impacts associated with the project, but we'd be happy to put together a flyer and get it out to the community.
Okay. I'd like to ask, is there some sort of information for us to take back to the Forest Hill Forum? I think they're going to be interested in this.
Sure. We'd be happy to do that as well.
And I'm very pleased to see this. And this drains, as I recall, to the middle fork of the American. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
That's the drainage side? Okay.
We'll confirm that for you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other public comments, questions on this? All right. What's the pleasure of the board? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move to Dry Creek Community Park, Phase Two Park Improvements. Rob Unholz, also Not Joel Swift, presenting.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Rob Unholz, Capital Improvements Program Manager. The item before you this morning is a recommendation for your board to approve plans and specifications and authorize staff to solicit bids for Dry Creek Community Park, Phase Two Park Improvements. In December 2011, the county awarded a bid to Vince Agura Construction for Phase One in the amount of $384,750. That project consisted of frontage utility infrastructure, about 1,200 lineal feet of 10-inch diameter sanitary sewer, about the same length of 16-inch diameter domestic water line, and about 750 feet of storm drain. Phase One is now complete at a final construction of 397,500, which is about 15% below the engineer's estimate for construction. Phase Two base bid consists of constructing the remaining onsite utilities, the park entrance and road improvements, parking lot and landscape improvements, and access trail, the restroom, concession buildings, a tot lot, baseball diamond, and a soccer field. We are including four bid alternates that are comprised of two tennis courts, one half-court basketball court, an additional baseball diamond, and an additional soccer field. Alternates will be recommended for award based on available funding. The final build-out will also include additional overflow parking, equestrian parking, and horseshoe pits. With the assistance of Baker Williams Engineering, documents are ready to bid, and the engineer's estimate of probable construction cost for the base bid of Phase Two is $2,447,500. The total project cost for Phase Two is, for the base bid, is estimated at $3,361,599, which includes the $2,447,500, and that does include contingency, as well as $914,099 for design, project management, bidding, permit fees, and contract administration. Staff will return to your board for approval of the recommended bid award, including any bid alternates and the appropriate budget revision, probably in July. We will be out for about four weeks' bid, and so, in order to proceed with the project, it's recommended that your board approve plans and specifications and authorize staff to solicit bids. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Duran.
Yes, I want to thank you very much for bringing this item forward. I also want to thank you very much for keeping not only this project on time, but below budget. 15% below the estimate of $470,000 is commendable in any construction situation. I hope that we can get the same amount of savings.
We're hoping for the same.
As well, but thank you again.
Supervisor Euler.
Yes, two quick things. Unless I missed it, I couldn't find anywhere in the staff report that specified where the funds were coming from.
They're coming from the CSA, the park dedication fees, and then the remaining balance from Phase One.
Okay. And then, the cost associated with the design, project management, bidding, permit fees, contract administration, $914,000, represents almost 40% of construction and contingency. Is that consistent? I mean, is that fairly representative of what we see in the industry? It just seems a little high for design permit and those things to be 40% of actual construction estimate.
Typically, for estimating purposes, we've used about 30%, and I think in anything in the dirt, we like to have a little bit more in there, because we think we know what we're going to encounter, but we can't be sure. Some of the utilities, for instance, on the infrastructure first phase, were heading to 18, 20 feet deep.
Okay.
We hope to improve on that number.
That's a design-related cost component, as opposed to a construction-related cost?
Those are design, and they're.
Those are, those are design, and there is some project contingency in there that can apply if, if we so need it. But again, our goal is to come in like we did at Phase, in Phase One, and come in under budget.
All right, thank you.
Supervisor Duran, your light is still on. I don't see any other questions from the board. Any member of the public want to comment on this item? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to Health and Human Services, Administrative Services, Contracts, and Non-Monetary Cooperative Agreements. Rebecca Melott, Melott, Rebecca, whose name I just said wrong. Okay, Melott.
As you mentioned, I'm Rebecca Melott from HHS Administration. I'm before you today to request authorization for the Director of Health and Human Services in partnership with CEO, County Council, and Risk Management to execute the yearly renewal of 53 contracts and subsequent amendments, as well as applications, grants, and revenue contracts under $50,000, and non-monetary cooperative agreements. The super resolution process is a time and money-saving arrangement first approved by your board on October 23, 2001. For the past 10 years, this process has been utilized to create efficiencies and redirect much-needed resources from administrative overhead to client service delivery. There's a variety of vital and mandated services provided to the residents of our community in these agreements, including medical services, inpatient psychiatric care, adoption planning, AIDS/ HIV patient care, and veterinary services. As in past years, the following criteria were used to select these agreements: recurring agreements with a total contract amount of less than $250,000 each, expenditure agreements which were originally approved as standalone items by your board, agreements to be executed with effective beginning dates during fiscal year 2013, 1213, and agreements that do not currently require a competitive bid or proposal process. Of the 53 specified agreements in this resolution, nine are revenue agreements totaling $819,000, and 44 are expenditure agreements totaling $3.6 million. Almost 80 percent of the expenditure agreements are funded through outside sources such as federal and state revenue, with remaining 20 percent coming from the general fund. All expenditure agreements executed as a result of this resolution will remain within 10 percent of the prior term's annual amount, and will allow for signature authority up to 10 percent of the initial amount for subsequent amendments. In addition to the resolution, authorization is requested to submit applications and execute grants and revenue contracts of less than $50,000, and execute non-monetary cooperative agreements such as Memoranda of Understanding. This authorization grants HHS the flexibility to quickly respond to much-needed revenue opportunities that otherwise would not be attainable due to regular procedural timelines. On a final note, approval of this resolution in no way obligates the county to move forward with any individual contract agreement should programmatic needs or available funding change. This action simply continues to support effective and efficient procedures that assist us in providing timely implementation of necessary services to the residents of Placer County. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I see no questions from the board. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. What's the pleasure?
Do you approve all of the items?
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. We will move to Children's System of Care. Richard Connect.
Good morning, Chairwoman Montgomery, members of the board. Richard Connect, Children's System of Care Director. Supporting and educating Placer parents and families about child abuse prevention and treatment available for victims of child abuse is a longstanding goal of the department and fulfills a number of state mandates for public prevention efforts. For many years, Kids First has delivered timely and effective prevention and outreach services using local media, community events, and providing counseling and parent education through its family resource centers. The Kids First is also a key partner in the very successful delivery of Placer's alternative CPS response, which you may recognize as differential response. Most recently, Kids First delivered combined services to over 4,000 young people. These effective prevention strategies have been a major driver to CSOC's effective reduction of foster care and group home placements in recent years. The $87,500 in County General Fund request leverages an additional $379,66 in state and federal supports, along with $37,000 in Children's Trust Fund monies. And I'd be happy to take any questions, and I'm pleased to recommend your approval.
Supervisor Euler?
Superintendent Chair, just a quick question for counsel, and an abundance of caution. My wife does serve as a volunteer board member for Kids First. Just want to make sure I have no issues participating in this item.
You do not.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any members of the public wish to comment on this? What's the pleasure of the board?
Do you approve all of the items?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. We will move to Department Item Nine, Public Works, Bridge Replacement Project, Brewer Road Over King Slough and Brewer Road Over Markham Ravine. Peter Kratz presenting.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Happy to be here today. This item consists of asking your board to adopt a resolution authorizing the Chair of the Board to execute Construction Contract Number 1117 with Viking Construction, Inc. in the amount of $1,725,553 for replacement of two bridges on Brewer Road, one over King Slough and the other over Markham Ravine. Our department recommendation for the award is based on determining that Viking is the lowest responsible and responsive bidder, ensuring County Council and Risk Management review and approval of the contract, and having the board authorize the Director of Public Works to execute contract change orders as necessary, up to an amount of 10 percent of the contract amount. Background on this project is that the contract has been developed to perform construction simultaneously on two bridges, which are narrow, deteriorating, and classified as structurally deficient. This is all developed under the Federal Highway Bridge Program criteria, and the department outreach to local residents in the area to review the proposed improvements, and the final bridge design meets applicable standards and improves hydraulic capacity at the two drainage crossings, along with approving approaches to the two bridge crossings as well. We had a competitive bid environment with advertising bids occurring on March 27 of this year, following bid opening on May 1 of this year, with three bids received ranging from just over $1.7 million for the low bid, to a high bid of just over $2.1 million. Our engineer's estimate is approximately $1.8 million. The schedule for construction is hopefully to finish the project this year with the potential rollover into 2013. It's a pretty ambitious project with the two bridges being built. There will be road closures up to 60 days, but there's a suitable detour through Sutter County, and we've acquired the encroachment permit through them to make that happen. Also vetted that with the residents in the area, and so people are up to speed with that. Environmentally, the project has already received, obviously, the necessary CEQA and NEPA approvals. Fiscally, the construction contract totaling just over $1.7 million is fully funded by the Federal Highway Bridge Program, and sufficient funds are available this year and in our future proposed department fiscal year budgets. With that, the formal request of your board is to adopt the resolution as stated in your board package, and I'm here to answer questions if you have any. Thank you.
Supervisor Weigant.
Peter, several years ago, there were several of these bridges that were deemed to need improvement by Caltrans. So where are we in the schedule? How many? There've been several others that have been completed. How many are left? Is this the end of it, or?
No, we have a few more, and I don't, I don't have a number in my head, Supervisor Weigant, but we're, we're on track to do, boy, at least a half dozen more over the next several years. They have, they continue to line up, and it is, thankfully for the Highway Bridge Program, the funding is a, is a great source to keep these bridges moving and to get them replaced, and we take advantage as much as we can with, again, hydraulic capacity issues, geometric design improvements, all those things that fall in.
And maybe I'll just add a couple minutes. I think there were seven that were actually zero-rated, meaning that Caltrans actually wanted us to shut them down to traffic. Working with the community, doing some engineering design, we actually designed temporary supports that are still working on many of those bridges today. There is still two, three on Dow Road that need to be done, Markham Ravine, Yankee Slough, and Coon Creek. Some of those are being held up as we're working through the Central Valley Flood Protection Board. We're hoping to get at least two of those done next year, which will be Markham Ravine and Yankee Slough. That'll only leave Coon Creek of those original ones. That's a much bigger bridge, it's going to take a little bit more time to do. That should complete those original seven.
And then, and a couple more up towards the crest as well, that we're working on, on Donner Pass Road as it comes down. So, I, you know, I feel like it's, it's a good program that we continue to work hard on.
Supervisor Holmes?
Yeah, I'm just pleased to see that the, it's funded 100 percent by the Highway Bridge Replacement Program, but how come it's 100 percent when one's in my district?
I think the way the financing worked for this is it is the typical 11.47 percent
that we kick in. That all happened during the design stage of the project, so the way it, it fell out, we were able to get 100 percent on the construction side.
I'm not complaining.
Robert and I, we sit.
Well, they're already done, so.
I see no other questions from the board. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to comment on this? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Do you approve all of the items?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
We will move to our last departmental item, which is, last public departmental item, Sheriff Law Enforcement Services, City of Colfax contract. We have with us Janice Gage and Ty Connors.
Good morning, Chair Montgomery, members of the board. This is our annual request for approval of the contract with the City of Colfax. The costs have increased just a nominal amount to cover our actual costs of doing business. Contract amount for 201213 is $565,811, which is an increase of just over $17,000, or 3.27 percent. Service levels are remaining the same for this fiscal year, and funds for the contract are included in our submitted budget for fiscal year 1213. There's no additional impact to the general fund, and we would be happy to answer any questions that you might have. With me today, I'm happy to introduce to you is our new Sergeant and Commander for the City of Colfax, Sergeant Ty Connors. He'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. The contract has gone to the City Council for approval and has been approved.
Thank you. Any questions from our board?
Congratulations, Sergeant.
Yeah. You're a welcome addition to Colfax. Thank you. It's great to have you there, Ty. Any member of the public want to comment on this? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board? Second. Why not? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. At this time, we will adjourn to closed session. Count Councill.
The board will go into closed session to take up the items, to start on page three of its agenda. There's one existing litigation matter, the Alliance for the Protection of Auburn Community Environment versus the County of Placer. There's one anticipated claim. There will be a discussion with labor negotiators regarding P E E O, and the board will continue its deliberations with regards to the recruitment for a new county executive officer, but I don't believe that it will come to a conclusion today.
I don't think we expect it will come to a conclusion today.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you want to choose me to?
We're not going to choose you again, Kirk, yes.
You tried, Kirk.
Yeah, good effort.